So we don't just cut services off that are critical, critical and funded by Esser. It's to designate a portion of fund balance for sustainability and stabilization. So it's to hedge that funding cliff. Once we decide whatever the sustainable activities are, programs that are tethered to Esser. Any additional questions? Thank you, Dr. Temple. So just reiterating again that we have three more engagement sessions with the board. In April, we'll have an additional follow up with the board for a budget update. In May, we'll take the first reading or the preliminary budget, bring that forward to the board with our projected revenues, expenditures and all of our initiatives. And then by June, you will have the final budget in front of you for voting and adoption. Yes, sir, Mr. Calhoun.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was trying to think about a access with the Esser stabilization and sustainability. We're doing that with all piloted projects, correct? All piloted projects going on through the districts, let's say we got grant funding, like the federal grant funding for D nine. That's going on right now. We're finding out how we can, what, with the sustainability of us taking on after the grant sunsets. Over like five years or so, how we'd be able to expand that throughout the district itself.
So it's, it's not for all grants. So, so it depends on the grant. So there are some grants that are single year grants and there's grants and there's some that are multi-year. And it depends on the purpose and the timeline of the grant. So I'd have to know specifically which grant you're talking about too.
I'm just thinking about for any grant that we get, if we bring it in, if we see something that's working with that grant. With any grant that we bring in, how do we expand it throughout the district, but then also try to make it sustainable that we will always know what we can pay for.
Great question. So, so for most grants, you have the option to reapply and get awarded again. Esser, because it was tied to the American Rescue Plan, its stimulus funds, it's looked at as a one-time fund source. But if you take a look at things like Head Start or Early Childhood, we submit an application every year requesting that money. So that money's been in the district for several years. That holds true for other grants as well. Title II, for instance, a lot of professional development for teachers is funded by Title II. And that's a recurring grant that the district receives. So it just depends on the grant and the stipulations attached to it.
Like I'm thinking about, another one I'm specifically thinking about would be with the acceleration schools and the bonuses that we put out. Now that are can come in with the teachers if they raise test scores or whatnot. How can we look at over five to 10 years, think how we can bring that under the district as opposed to an outside agency?
That's a great question. So, so those are some of the actual conversations and questions that the administration and the board engages in when we're talking about building the budget.
Right.
I don't have an answer for that today for that specific example.
Right.
But typically, the district looks at critical work and the continuity of that critical work. So in previous years, there were things that were tethered, that were those items in, in future years. So those conversations happen. So, so yeah, so I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, I'm just thinking further a little bit. Well, no, thank you.
Thank you. So now we'll have the portion of our presentation that's related to our debt and debt service. We have Jay from PFM and Carol Clark, our bond counsel. So Maggie, if you could bring up that presentation. And the purpose of this presentation is to give you guys a very high level overview of our debt, how it's structured, how we pay our payments, et cetera, what that universe looks like.
Sorry, Jay, this was the presentation we were supposed to have at the Cow the other day. Okay.
Okay, I'll give this a try between the two of us in case we need to share. I'm, I'm Carol Clark with Hanes Receivler Boyd Law Firm here in Charleston. And I've been working with the district for close to 20 years now. And this is Jay Glover with Public Financial Management out of Orlando. And they've been financial advisor to the district for about the same length of time. And while Ms. Williams and her team were really focusing on operations and on the operating fund, we're really looking more at the, the debt side of things. The debt financing for long-term capital projects and also the debt millage side of the equation. There are several different types of financings we go through every year. And great, we got the slides on now. And one of these is actually on the agenda for today's meeting, which is the approval of the bond anticipation notes. And all of these financings are sort of woven together. And to understand, one, you really need the big picture of stepping back and looking at all of them and how they sort of relate to each other. So just in general, we've got the short-term debt, which is cash flow funding both on the operation side, which is the tax anticipation note, as well on the capital side, which are the bond anticipation notes that are on the agenda today. And the bands, as we call them for short, really break down into two categories. There is the fixed cost of ownership, capital maintenance, funding that is eventually paid back through debt service millage, as well as cash flow funding for the sales tax program, which will never be paid from any debt service millage. At the end of the day, that's all paid out of the sales tax collections. Then moving on down, we've got long-term debt, which consists of general obligation bonds, which is the way that the district really funded all of their capital needs up until 2004, when there was a transition made to installment purchase revenue bonds, which are referred to as IPRBs or alternative financing that funded the 2004 through 2009 capital programs through three series of bond issues. And then lastly is the sales tax program, which the district has just started on their third sales tax program. The initial one was approved in 2010 and ran for six years. Then we had a new list of projects. That program was approved in 2014. And then most recently, the current program was approved in 2020. And that one sent, started collections on January 1st of this year. And while that is all managed through debt, it's just on a short-term basis. And the, the whole shift of this, or the intention is to shift from debt that is paid back by property taxpayers, but from the one penny that's spent by everybody coming into Charleston County to, you know, come for the weekend or cruise ships or anything else. And so there really is, has been a big shift over the past 12 years for funding, not so much with general obligation debt with the sales tax. The next slide. With short-term debt, as we were mentioning, tax anticipation note, and we will talk about this more in depth in probably August or September. But when you get your property tax bill, that usually comes in around October. And taxes are due without penalty by January 15th. And so most people pay their taxes in December and January. So the bulk of that money for operations comes in in practically a six-week period. And so by the time we get into the late summer or early fall, the bank account can be getting a little bit low on the operating side. And so this is just really borrowing in advance of the, the general fund tax collections. So we typically issue those notes around September or October. And they are required by state law to be paid back within 90 days of the due date for tax collections. So every year we have an April 1st maturity date. So that's just kind of basically getting in advance on our operating fund, operating funds coming from property taxes. And then the second type of short-term financing are the bond anticipation notes. And we, we'll see when we look at what's being approved today. But there is, there is a Series A issue every year, which pays the fixed cost of ownership, which is basically capital projects that are undertaken, a lot of them over the summer holidays for re-roofing schools or painting or just typical kind of maintenance projects. There's also technology upgrades, as I said, kind of typical capital maintenance. And then the other part of that is to make payments on the installment purchase revenue bonds, which we'll get into in a little bit more detail. And then we always have a second series of bond anticipation notes, which is cash flow funding for the construction projects being funded by the sales tax program. And as we said, the, the current sales tax program started collections January 1 of this year. And so that will be sort of a bell curve over the course of the next six years. And so the construction gets wrapped up before there are enough dollars in really to just use pay-as-you-go funding for that. And so with this bond anticipation note for sales tax, that is just to, it's like a construction loan, but it, it will be paid back. We will roll those notes every year for the six-year period. And then at the expiration of the current sales tax period, those will be retired from sales tax collections. And Jay may touch on this a little bit more, but typically in the first kind of three years of a sales tax program, that first year you, you borrow a little bit, that's for advanced design. Then the next year you need to retire that note and you're adding on to it for construction. And then the following year, you're probably going to be adding additional amounts. And then after the fourth year or so, it starts winding down as those collections have been rolling in and you're starting to finish up the earlier projects. But that's, we, as I said, we're in the third cycle now with that third sales tax program.
Next slide. Carol, just one second. I think the slide's coming back up. Thank you.
Okay, we can go on to long-term debt, the next slide. And without going too much into the history of things, but up until really the mid 2000s, general obligation bonds were really school districts only means for financing, financing capital projects. And they were usually done over 20, 25-year period. There are two types of debt that are authorized. The state constitution says that any school district can issue up to 8% of its assessed value. And you were, you're capped at that amount unless you hold a bond referendum, which then authorizes whatever amount of, of bonds you put into that referendum. And what was happening throughout the 1990s, Charleston was in a little bit better position because the tax base was so large. But so many of these very small school districts were just up against that debt limit and could not issue, didn't have capacity to issue any more debt. So that the only option then was to hold a bond referendum. And sometimes those were successful and sometimes they weren't. Charleston, I think the last bond referendum that was passed was about 1998. And then in the early 2000s, this concept of installment purchase revenue bonds or, or alternative financing was developed. And with those bonds, the school district does not issue the debt directly on its own. There is a 501(c)(3), a nonprofit corporation, which in Charleston's case is called the Charleston Education, Educational Excellence Financing Corporation, or CF. You'll hear references from time to time about CF. But the nonprofit issues the bonds, uses the money to build schools, and the school district makes semi-annual payments to CF in amounts that are sufficient to make the principal and interest payments on the bonds. And in that way, the district is basically buying portions of those schools back from CF on a semi-annual basis. And so with, with the outstanding IPRBs, they all have interest due on June 1st of each year. And then principal and interest is due on December 1st. So the district needs to have a means of raising money prior to June 1 and December 1 to make the payments on those bonds, which are in effect paying for the construction renovation of, of a number of schools that were financed in 2004, 5 and 6, including Boust. And just there's a long list, Academic Magnet, the list goes on and on throughout the district. So as I said, that is one of the things that we are here to talk about is the financings for, for making those payments on the CF bonds. And as I said, we, we did those financings in 2004, 5 and 6. And then in 2006, the state legislature said, no, we don't think you should be able to use this type of financing anymore. So from 2006, oh, from 2007 onwards, IPRBs were not available for financing school facilities. But we have had a couple of refundings, a couple of refund, refinancings were done in 2013 and 2014 just to lower the interest rates. And that's another thing that we may be talking about sometime later on this year is there may be the possibility later on in the year of again, saving money by lowering the rates on those bonds. Then with the next, the next slide, this just kind of puts together a timeline for the types of financings that we have been talking about. We'll, we'll skip long-term debt at the top and talk about the short-term debt that's listed here. April and May, we're actually coming to you now for the approval of the spring bond anticipation note, which will be issued in early May. And that is to fund all these different type projects we've been talking about, plus the sales tax. The spring ban, the Series A ban will be retired in November from a very short-term general obligation bond, which will be retired on March 1 of next year through millage issued in the 2023, 24 budget. The sales tax ban will have a one-year maturity. And so in May of next year, we'll be coming back to refund that, possibly add new money. And that process will continue through 2028. Tax anticipation note, we mentioned, will be done in late spring, I mean, late summer, just whenever the need arises. And then the October and November annual general obligation bonds will be to retire the Series A ban and make the December 1 payment on the installment purchase bonds. And then finally, while we said that the district has not really issued any long-term debt in the past several years, there is the option there under the 8% debt limit. And that's something that various members of the finance team, as well as PFM, will be talking about because there may be some schools later on this year, which I believe were, were approved as part of the current sales tax program. But there's been discussion about moving those forward by, by funding those through a general obligation bond as opposed to waiting to see if there's enough money coming through on the sales tax program. Jay?
Thanks, Carol. And again, Jay Glover from PFM Financial Advisors. We are the district's financial advisor on debt-related matters. And while Carol gave kind of an overview of the words associated with these financings, I'm going to try to dig into the numbers just a little bit, but also keep it as high level as possible. We do maintain a fairly detailed Excel model that shows cash flows over the entire term of your debt portfolio, which is through fiscal year 2032, not only on the general obligation side, but also on the sales tax side. It looks at cash flows associated with the projects, sales tax collections, to make sure that the ultimate plan will be followed through on, which I think we've all talked about, which is the district being debt-free by 2032, which is still the plan and still on target, absent any future decisions that might be made to add debt service in the future. On slide six here, this is just pictorially what your current outstanding debt looks like that Carol just described. And it's broken down into the categories, just like she mentioned. On the top is your long-term GO bonds there. And you can see it's about $50 million outstanding as of March 1, 2023. And we also have a category that shows how much of that is approved within your 8% debt limit because we always want to make sure there's sufficient capacity moving forward to issue 8% debt for the reasons Carol mentioned, which are to provide cash flow on your sales tax program, but also make sure there's capacity to pay your installment payments each twice a year. So again, 25 million of that long-term debt is 8% debt. The next category is your short-term bonds. And again, while this is a significant amount of debt, it's very short-term in nature for cash flow. And again, I won't go into the reasons why, as Carol just described, but 247, almost $250 million worth of your debt is short-term debt and associated with your 8% debt limit. Having said that, the 2022 B ban, which is there about $74 million, that's the remaining piece of your Phase 4 sales tax program. So your last collections just came in in December for that program. And we'll actually pay all of the debt off in March of 2023, or excuse me, May of 2023. So you'll be completely debt-free on your Phase 4 sales tax program. And the same thing with the 2022 C ban, that's for your Phase 5 program. Yeah, question?
I, I'm learning about this, obviously. So, but I know like in my personal life, like with mortgages and things like that, if you're able to apply a little extra to your payment, then eventually you, you save money because you gain momentum faster on paying off debt. So two questions, is that a possibility with any of this? And then also, if we become debt-free, is that money that we can then apply to, say, raising salaries for teachers?
Well, let me attack that in two, two different questions. And Mr. Kennedy might want to weigh in on the second piece there. But yes, most of this debt, yeah, that's a short answer. We can go into that. Most of this debt does have potential call flexibility. So there is the ability to pay it down early at points in time if there is additional cash to do that. Or if interest rates are lower, you could actually refinance debt for debt service savings. So that is the flexibility, you know, just like your mortgage, you can pay it down early potentially, but you obviously have to have the cash flow to do that. And within our current model, we target 28 mils for debt service, which really covers what you need to make existing payments. So to go above and beyond that, you'd likely have to raise an additional millage. As for the second question, we're really talking about debt service millage. So to the extent that goes to zero, I mean, you could potentially, you know, raise an operating millage for salaries, but that's really unrelated to the debt service millage. That would give you a lot of flexibility in your capital program moving forward and allow you to reduce the millage levy on the citizens. And if you keep in mind, with a debt service millage, that's not only residential, but that's also your commercial property. So that would be the benefit of that, really lots of flexibility with a capital program and potentially a lower or no debt service millage. But Mr. Kennedy, I know that's probably a lot to handle there, but I don't know if you have anything to weigh in on.
I think they captured it, yeah.
Again, it's very important to keep debt service separate from operating millage, but they do give you a little bit of flexibility.
Thank you.
No problem. Yeah, I think I mentioned that, that homeowners, the property, the debt service millage includes both your residential homeowners and your commercial properties, whereas your operating millage is really just your commercial base.
We like that.
The 20, and just going through the 2022 C ban, so that was actually $81 million. That was your initial upfront money for your Phase 5 sales tax program. So as was mentioned, your collections didn't start till January of 2023, but there's a lot of advanced design and planning that comes about so these projects can be put into the ground. So last year, we actually raised $81 million so we could start paying for some of that advanced design so that we can get those projects started very quickly. So again, that's $81 million. We will be rolling that as part of the 2023 B ban and adding about 40 million additional to that. So you'll have about $120 million of cash flow ban associated with your Phase 5 program. And as was mentioned, that will ramp up over time and then probably level out. And we'll start paying that ban down as we approach the sunset of the Phase 5 program, just like we're doing in May of this year with the Phase 4 program. And then the 2022 A and B, those were the GO bonds that Carol mentioned that are issued in the November timeframe and paid off in March of 2023 with that debt service millage that we talked about. Again, very short-term debt that will be coming back to you in late fall to be talking about. And then the last pieces of debt were again, the installment purchase revenue bonds that were previously done. And those are sort of, are what they are, and we pay those down annually. And again, if you look at the maturity date of each of those columns, the latest one is December 1 of 2031, your fiscal year 2032. So we're right on target using very conservative assumptions to pay this off and meet that program. I know that was a question that came up before, but we're very conservative on our, our estimates in terms of assessed value growth. I think we use between one and a half and 2% annually. And we do not assume a reassessment, which happens every five years. So we think we're very conservative on that. Also with the sales tax program, the baseline that we are using for your sales tax collections now, if there was 0% growth over the entire term of the next, of this program, we would still have sufficient funds to actually pay that debt off. Again, as we move through the program, we reassess the collections, the timing of projects and are adding projects as we can. But we don't want to do that too quickly because we're really only in the second month of collections. And while things have been great the last several years, we're always cautious of a recession or, you know, if inflation becomes much more in check and the cost of items goes down, that also negatively impacts your sales tax collection. So if there's one of a few takeaways from this is that we're very conservative in our assumptions because we don't want to put you in a situation where you don't have sufficient capacity to pay your debt off. And I'm going to move here pretty quickly. Again, page seven, if we can flip one more slide, this is a calculation of your 8% debt. So it takes your assessed valuations, takes 8% of that. And the good thing for Charleston County School District is you have $413 million worth of 8% capacity, which generally grows as your assessed values grow. Again, you're in a very fortunate position in this terms. There's many districts that are nice, quite nice size that might only have 40 or 50 million of 8% capacity. And you can imagine what 40 or 50 million dollars with the debt dues in terms of building schools. It doesn't get you very far. So you are in a very good position. And we stay well within that limit within all of our projections and our model. Flipping to the next slide, and again, I'm trying not to get too much in the weeds, but this is the, really the output that we, you know, look at moving forward. It shows what not only your current obligations are, but what your future obligations are. Because we're very cognizant of you have current debt, but you also have debt that has to be issued through that 2032 timeframe to make sure we pay off those installment purchase revenue bonds. So when you take into account all of your current debt, what we need to pay off your installment revenue bonds and what we currently have in terms of your Phase 5 sales tax program, the full $120 million after the issuance of this ban, you still have $172 million worth of 8% debt capacity. And while that is important, there's a plan in place to actually issue about $99 million worth of that capacity later this year for some projects that are scheduled to be done. So even if that is approved and we move forward with that, there's still sufficient capacity within your 8% debt limit to handle all of this. And then skipping to page nine, I think this goes without saying, or we've actually said it a bunch already, this 8% capacity changes over time. Hopefully assessed values continue to grow, which improves that 8% capacity. Also improves the amount of money that you can generate by that 28 mils of debt service levy. It also improves as debt is retired, but then if we issue new debt, it goes down. So it's a real balancing act that we model out over again, the full term of your program to make sure we stay well within the limits. And we've mentioned this before as well, we target $28 million, I mean, excuse me, 28 mils for debt service. We issue about $55 million a year for fixed cost of ownership. I think, sorry, I think the slides went up, went back one more. You're fine. And that grows each year as the needs grow, grow. So going to the last slide, and again, I think this is another one of the takeaways. And we'll kind of come full circle from Ms. Williams' presentation. You know, it seems like there's a lot of debt outstanding and I'm not, there is a lot of debt. It's big numbers. You're a very large school district. But the district staff and the board has been very proactive in how they manage this debt. And it's really resulted in very strong credit ratings. So if you look here, we pay off about $45 million of debt per year. And all the debt will be paid off by fiscal year 2032. We continue to reiterate that because that's something we've talked about for years and years and are on plan to do that. We also have been in a declining interest rate cycle up until about a year ago. So we've been very proactive in taking advantage of market conditions to do refinancings. You talk about your mortgage, just like you would refinance your mortgage as rates go down. We've done that with the district's debt and saved to the tune of about $90 million on a net present value basis since 2010. Those opportunities might be less frequent moving forward because we're Those opportunities might be less frequent moving forward because we're on a rising interest rate environment now, and we've actually lowered the debt rate on each of our outstanding obligations significantly. Uh, there's one main opportunity we are monitoring associated with your installment purchase revenue bonds that with a little bit of help from interest rates over the next year or so, we might be able to save some money on that. But that would come back to you for further consideration at the appropriate time. And I'll conclude just by saying, uh, anytime you issue debt, you go out and get what's called a credit rating. So that's a third party entity that comes in and looks at the financial position of the district, your debt metrics, and they put a credit rating on the district. And right now you're rated double A two and double A plus um, by uh, Moody's and S and P. Triple A is the highest credit rating you can get, which is one notch below that double A plus rating that you have. And I am not aware of any school district, at least in the state of South Carolina and potentially in the nation. I'm sure there might be one in the nation. I probably shouldn't say it on the record, but not in South Carolina that I'm aware of that has a triple A rating. There's just issues with school district for the rating agencies very rarely get to a triple A rating. But they do cite things in the report like strong financial position, strong wealth levels, steady population enrollment growth, manageable leverage. And then they also highlight the obvious, you're a coastal community, they're susceptible to climate risk. And one of the biggest things associated with this credit rating is if you'll remember Ms. Williams' presentation, in twenty sixteen, that twelve point two million dollar fund balance, the ratings were not this at that point in time. And there was a period of time where the ratings were going the wrong direction. I think they got as low as potentially A, at least in the A category, mainly related to that fund balance. And since then, that steady progression in fund balance up to the hundred and fifty nine million dollar level last year is really one of the main reasons why these credit ratings are so strong. So um, I would encourage you to continue to be diligent about fund balance and make sure that's sort of at the top of your mind when you're making financial decisions, which I know it will be. But again, if there's just a couple of takeaways, I know it sounds like a lot of debt, but it is very conservatively managed. Your staff is very proactive about how they go about doing it. We as financial professionals support them in doing so, and I think we'll be in good position to execute on that plan to have you all out of debt by twenty thirty two, you know, absent any decisions you might make in the future to add additional debt. But um, with that, I know it was a lot and a little bit in the weeds, but I hope that at least gives you a sense of things that might come before you in terms of debt and reassure you that it is managed in a proactive and efficient manner.
Just to, just to um, go back to what you were saying about the rating, is the saying that we are over a double A on our way to three? Triple A?
Well, so you're one notch below a triple A rating, which is the highest credit rating you can have. And actually, S and P doesn't rate the federal government triple A. So I think like Charleston County is a triple A, and it's not uncommon for a city or county to get to that triple A level, which is the highest level. I would suggest to you that staying at that double A plus level is a great achievement. And absent any financial deterioration, you would stay there. It's very unlikely the school district is going to get to that triple A rating. And the reason is because you would have to build your fund balance up to a level that's probably not seen very well by the state per se. They would want you to spend that money. So you get to some point where, you know, your fund balance needs to get so high to get to triple A that you really don't want to get there because there's trade offs in terms of your operations and other things to do that, if that makes sense. But getting to that double A plus level where you are is a great accomplishment and puts you probably at the top of our school district rated in the state of South Carolina.
We like that.
Thank you, Jay. One, one thing I wanted to add uh, to Jay's great presentation, is one thing I wanted to highlight that he said is that we do this work in partnership with PFM. So the finance team is very diligent about meeting, discussing what our debt is, um, the financial outlook. I know I specifically and and CFOs before me have asked for different scenarios to model out things before we bring them to the board, and they're very good at doing that. So so we take all things into consideration before we bring something as significant as as debt before the board for voting.
And and Ms. Williams, if I might add, I know there was a lot of questions. You know, we prepare a presentation periodically that goes to your sales tax oversight committee that looks at stress tests. And we look at what the baseline revenue is. We look at like, what happens if there's a fifteen percent decline recession scenario? And then you grow at two percent after that. And really, under almost every scenario, you're well within the baselines in the model. And we hope that over time, the collections are much stronger than we're estimating, but we intentionally are very conservative in that. And that served you well. You've hit COVID, you know, we, it was a temporary blip, thankfully, but you all rebounded relatively well, um, and we hope that any future kind of issues will be able to withstand as well.
So um, Carol uh, is going to review one final component of of debt, just so you guys are ultra clear on on what we're presenting to you um, for a vote. Maggie, can you, can you pull that up, please?
Yes, that's it. As I mentioned when we got started, that we do have one item on the agenda today that makes this presentation timely, because we are talking about the bond anticipation notes, which we will go out in the market to sell in April and then close on those in May. And um, one, one requirement of that, or anytime we issue debt, the board has to approve a resolution authorizing the issuance of the debt. And so we've got the sort of forty page document here that has all of the details. And then what Maggie has up on the screen is the sort of the two, two page Cliff Notes edition. And so we can just kind of walk through that quickly, just to to spell out the specifics of what's being approved. Um, we've got three series that we are looking to have approved in this resolution, and this all relates back to what we were talking about with the bond anticipation notes. Um, we've got series A, which is being authorized in the amount not to exceed seventy million dollars. And that um, that will fund three different parts of of the overall program. As I mentioned earlier, we will uh, use funding from that to make the installment payments, the the June one interest payment on the installment bonds. And the total of funding that will be coming from series A ban will be approximately five point nine million. And then um, the second and the largest piece of it is the fixed cost of ownership program, which will include facilities, maintenance, technology, security, furnishings and equipment. And I believe there's an item on the agenda today that will go into some detail as to exactly what is being approved um, to be funded in that fixed, fixed, uh, fixed cost of ownership sort of umbrella. And there, the approximate amount is fifty five million dollars. And then finally, there were three schools that were approved in the um, current sales tax program. And we issued a small amount of money last year, I think, to fund the advanced design of these schools, uh, being Morningside Middle School, AC Corcoran Elementary and Deer Park Middle. And uh, the the series twenty twenty three A ban will include approximately one point two million to begin construction on those schools. So that's, that's series A. And series A will be um, paid off in November of this year by a short term general obligation bond, which will be retired in its entirety on uh, March first of twenty twenty four. And so where we are talking about issuing debt to retire debt, it still will all be within about a nine month period. Um, and then series B is the sales tax program. We're asking for authorization of not to exceed a hundred and thirty five million dollars. And those funds will be used for two purposes. It will retire the twenty twenty two sales tax ban, um, which matures in May this year in the approximate amount of eighty four point five million. And then it will also provide um, cash flow funding for construction of approximately forty million dollars of the current sales tax program. And then finally, um, one smaller item that we really didn't touch on, but back in twenty twenty, there was a refunding opportunity to refunding a portion of the two thousand thirteen installment bonds. But because of changes in the tax law since, since those bonds were issued, the twenty twenty refunding bonds could not be issued as tax exempt, but they could be issued as taxable and still generated, say, you know, sufficient savings. So we've got a very small issue here that's not exceeding two million dollars. Will be issued as a short term taxable bond um, to make the decent, I mean, the June one um, interest payment on the taxable IPRBs. So if you flip over to the next slide, um, that gives a listing, a very general listing of the fixed cost of ownership projects there. And then at the end is a recap of the different portions of these three bond anticipation notes and what specifically they are um, funding in the approximate amount. So as I said, this will be on the agenda for the regular meeting for approval. And we just thought, since we were sort of in the the mindset of talking about all these debt issues, to go through this item now, just in case there were any questions um, related to it.
If there are no questions, this concludes um, the board budget workshop.